We might call to order the September 27, 2018, study session, a special council meeting of the Palm Springs City Council. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Please place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you. City Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Holstich?
Present.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Councilmember Coors?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Roberts?
I'm here.
Mayor Moon?
Present.
If I can make one quick announcement, we do have a Spanish interpreter if there's a need. She's located in the back of the room. Just let me know and we'll get you set up.
Can she say that in Spanish as well?
Yes.
On there?
No, if you could come up.
Anthony, should we find out if we have need for that? I mean, should we take?
She's gonna say in Spanish.
She's gonna do the entire thing in Spanish? Okay.
No, no.
Okay.
If there is any person present who speaks Spanish, I will translate it.
Speak into the mic first.
If there is any person present who speaks Spanish, I will translate it.
Hey, thank you. Okay, our first item of business is to, is a preservat, is a presentation, oh, do we need to do a roll call of the working group?
They'll be introducing themselves.
Okay. First thing we will do is a presentation by the Calif, and recommenda, of the recommendations of the California Voting Rights Act, CBRI Community Working Group related to the city's governance structure, election method, election year, sequence of elections, diversification of boards and commissions, and other related matters. So would each of you please introduce yourself and then give us your report? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Alexis Ortega. I was born and raised in Palm Springs, and I'm a Pisces.
Hi, my name is Tobias Wolf. I'm the one part-time resident on the group. I'm here about five months out of the year, and on the east coast the other seven months where I'm a law professor at the University of Pennsylvania.
Hi, I'm Kathy Wormick. I'm a resident of Palm Springs, and I think you occasionally hear from me as the chair of the planning commission.
I'm Steve Moses. I've been coming to Palm Springs since the 1960s. Permanent resident now for about 10 years, and happy to be a member of this committee.
I'm Ed Doobie. I moved to Palm Springs about four years ago after living in Washington DC and working for the World Bank in Africa and the former Soviet Union for 25 years.
I'm Dixie Miller. I am part of the CBR group, as you can see. I'm president for Desert Highland Gateway.
Dixie, can you speak into your microphone? Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Dixie Miller, and I am president for Desert Highland Gateway Estates Community, and I am a resident of Palm Springs forever.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Afthav Dada, and I am the president of Palm Springs Hospitality Association, chairman of PS Resorts, and part-time employee of Hilton.
Okay, thank you. Just want to say that this subcommittee was an outgrowth of the Government Reform Subcommittee that was established by Mayor Moon and by Councilmember Roberts, or excuse me, by Councilmember Coors. And we had a couple of members of that group that because of the time commitment that was involved in this commitment were not able to continue. We were able to add a couple of new members, which brought some very special skills as well as some incredibly important and unique experiences that they have as generally long, long-term residents of our city. The work group has done an incredible job, and I'm going to let them and their work product speak for itself. But we thank them for the kind of commitment that they gave and the, the work that went into this, which was absolutely incredible. And before we go on with that, I'd like to just make one note. From time to time over the social networks, we've seen some questions that have emerged that would seem to implicate that decisions that we're making here could impact the terms or the roles that the existing city council has, and that is simply absolutely not true. Everything that we are discussing has to do with what we will do going forward after the next set of elections that we have for members of city council. And with that, I want to turn it over to the work group, and again, thank you for your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Middleton. Can we get the Pres, PowerPoint presentation? I would sing, but my voice is not that good. All right, here we go. Great. So, again, my name's Alexis Ortega. I'm one of the three co-chairs of the California Voting Rights Act Working Group. So you'll see me referring to that as a CBRA, just for folks who don't know that. So, let's get started. First, just a little background on this group and how we've arrived to a recommendation. So we are a group of full-time, mostly full-time and one part-time resident. We were created at the request of the council and the ad hoc subcommittee to address the issues facing the city with regards to the settlement with the law firm representing the Southwest Voter Registration and Education Project. So that's actually the nonprofit that works towards Latino civil rights and voting rights. So we met to talk about those issues in light of allegations of racially polarized voting in the city of Palm Springs. So specifically, you can see the bullet points here listed on what we addressed. We'll spend a majority of time tonight talking about four versus five districts. Tobias will explain kind of why we were limited in scope in looking at that. Also, the transition to even-year elections, how to select the mayor going forward, what the new election process might be in a district, and then additionally, how to reduce barriers to running for city council and working on the city council, increasing diversity in boards and commissions, and reviewing maps. But I will say that tonight we're not making any specific backbreaker recommendations. We have a much further timeline with regards to that, so we're really going to focus on the four versus five districts and some of the other issues listed. So our process. We started meeting regularly in May 2018, once the council agreed to move forward in this direction. And we really organized ourselves around these issues with the leadership of the ad hoc subcommittee. And what we really strive to do was seek information and do research on this topic. So this is something that's affecting cities all across the state of California. And so we looked to look at numbers of, of like, which cities are actually district cities, which cities are cities that engage in at-large elections, which of those have council-elected mayors, which of them have at-large elected mayors. So we did all that research and compiled numbers and looked at percentages and things like that. We also supported the city's outreach efforts in getting this information to you all, the residents. And in particular, we had a really targeted focus on African-American, Latino, and Filipino communities, specifically in light of these allegations of racially polarized voting, right? So we wanted to make sure that those communities were addressed. So, let's see. But, one of the ways that we did that is we worked in a grassroots manner with local organizers, and we held events that I'm really proud of. One that was conducted entirely in Spanish at Catherine Finch elementary, one that was organized by Filipino residents in the Demuth Park neighborhood. And then, we actually had several organized by African-American residents in Desert Highlands neighborhood. And we also had individual meetings with folks. Many members of this working group offered to meet with people on an individual basis. Special shout-out to Ed Doobie, who, as a member of the working group, offered his expertise with regards to the map technology and interactive system. All right. So, this is a photo of one of those such events. So early on in this process, we had heard comments from community members that were really misinformed with regards to communities of color in the city, including this idea that folks of color just don't show up or engage. And if it's not clear to you, I am a Latino resident of Palm Springs, and so this was actually quite frustrating to hear. And so the working group was really intentional about building relationships with these communities in a way that maybe the city hasn't successfully engaged in before. So we really strive to create a lot of space for these communities. So this is one such event by a Nihon. It was organized and rooted really in Filipino-American culture and community, of which our city has a strong and rich history. Special thanks to the organizers. If you're here, would you mind just raising your hand or standing up? Michelle Castillo and Edwin Ramram, along with the other, a couple other people. Thank you so much for your hard work and dedication. So, that was a lovely group of, of folks, and that was really in response to an event that had previously happened at Demuth Park where that community just wasn't there. And so part of that was looking at the, at the ways in which the city had engaged that community and trying to think of alternatives. So they did canvassing, like door-to-door knocking. And there's really strong roots of the Filipino community in Demuth Park neighborhood. Another such event, which we don't have a picture here of, but that I mentioned, was one conducted entirely in Spanish at Catherine Finch elementary, with the help of the city's diversity consultant, Tisok Datslan, and the working group member Grace Garner, who couldn't be here today, as well as her mother Juanita. If you were at that event or an organizer, would you please raise your hand? Yay! Thank you, thank you so much. And this photo is a photo of one event that was held at Desert Highlands with the help of Dixie Miller, who's a member of this working group, to bring information and engagement with some Black residents. And in particular, we had a focused map drawing session. So we went through the technology of, of drawing maps that the city has provided. These were in addition to meetings that we held with one PS. We held a meeting at Four Seasons, as well as other ones. Some that occurred at the, the convention center. So many of you may have been to one of those. And so during many of these meetings, we actually heard comments from residents about the process. As you saw in previous slides, we started meeting in May, and so this is, we've been given an amount of eight months to do this process, which is an extension from what most cities have. I believe it's three months that most cities have. And so even in this process of us having an extension, there was this feeling that there still wasn't enough time, right? Some communities just weren't aware of, of what was happening, and they felt sort of rushed as part of the process. And so, just something to note, I think it's really special that the city was able to secure that settlement. And something like this, I think, requires a lot of time and attention. And so, I think it was Ed who I heard who said, "This is a, this is a marathon", and we really tried to do it at a sprint pace. And we're still doing that. So, moving on. I touched upon this briefly, but just some important considerations that the working group had with regards to this work. We really tried to bring in understanding of the history of our city with regards to communities of color and other marginalized people. Palm Springs, much like the history of this country really, has not been particularly kind to Latino, Black, Filipino, Asian, and Indigenous folks. We've often been shut out from decision-making that affects our livelihoods. Discrimination has been codified into law. There's been de facto segregation, some of which still affects us today. And in particular, I'm referring to Section 14, which I believe is a stain on our past, and one in which I think the city has an opportunity to help make amends for. It is precisely because of Section 14 and the forcible displacement of folks that were living there, and other policies that we have these really particular concentrations of communities living in certain parts of the cities today. I'm talking specifically about Desert Highlands, Demuth Park, Lawrence Crossley, as well as others. And so after these homes were burned down in the 60s, many of these folks who lived here moved to these other neighborhoods. And so the process of districting really affects and is important in trying to address those issues in terms of where folks are living and where they're concentrated. Some other things that we made sure that we considered. So, there is this one PS model in the city, and I believe that there, and I think the working group agrees with me, that there are certain neighborhoods and groups of folks that are excluded from this model currently. For instance, the neighborhood in which I grew up, which is just south of the Coyote-run affordable housing projects, and also the trailer park right across the street in which, you know, my aunt took care of me, and I had family friends who took care of me after school, Golden Sands, are two neighborhoods that are not traditionally organized in that model. And so this may contribute to the sense that the city elevates the status of organized neighborhoods while seemingly ignoring others. And these are really important considerations when we're talking about districting and keeping neighborhoods intact, which we certainly want to do. And let's consider who's not yet at that table, and make sure that the city is aware of that and does work to address that. And then finally, we gave significant consideration to the basis and foundation of good government and political accountability with regards to this districting process and how that plays out with regards to those two. So I will hand it off to Tobias to talk about that.
Thank you. Thank you. So the, yeah, actually, that might be easier. Thank you. So the process of engagement with our neighbors and with a broad section of communities that Alexis just described was, for, had a lot of different purposes associated with it, and mostly it was about educating us. Educating us about what we needed to know about communities that had strong feelings about the redistricting process, educating ourselves about what types of communities of interest exist within Palm Springs. That's a term that the California Voting Rights Act is concerned with, and that we wanted to hear from our neighbors and residents in Palm Springs about how they view community and how they view neighborhood. And also educating us about their views about good governance in the city of Palm Springs. And one of the things that we discovered, which was not surprising when we thought about it, was that there were a lot of residents of Palm Springs who didn't have a really clear sense of how the city council is presently organized. And particularly, the relationship of the position of mayor to the position of city council member. So, this is one of the background principles that we had as a kind of defining starting point for our work. The Palm Springs City Charter provides for a city council of five members, and they're five co-equal members. They all have one vote on city council. They all have the same legislative powers in the city of Palm Springs. And the position of mayor is provided for separately in the city charter, but it's provided for as a ceremonial position. And so what that means in the charter is that the mayor has duties that are not exclusive duties, but that are duties concentrated in the mayor's position, to be a spokesperson for the city, to perform ceremonial functions for the city. But when it comes to management power in the city, the mayor doesn't have any more power than any other member of city council. And in fact, we have a city manager whose job it is to be in charge of the day-to-day management of Palm Springs. And then the city manager is himself, in this case himself, answerable to the full city council. And we discovered that there was some lack of understanding about that among many different residents of many different descriptions and demographics throughout the city of Palm Springs. And that's not surprising, because I think a lot of us grew up with a sense that a mayor is an executive and a mayor has managerial authority. But that turns out not to be the case in Palm Springs. And so we were charged with thinking specifically about going to district elections and the difference between going to a five-district system, which would be a system where all five members of the city council are elected from the newly-created districts, and then the mayor is chosen from among the members of the city council that are elected, or a four-district system, which would be a system where four members of city council are elected from districts, and then the mayor is elected at-large from the entire city. So in the four-district option, the mayor is still just one of five members of city council, right? The mayor still doesn't have managerial authority. David Reedy is not in danger of being fired, so far as we know. But the idea was to have the mayor be sort of defined in a different way in a four-district option than the other members of city council. And so part of the background of our examination of these options was about whether it would make sense to have, to go to a system where you still have five city council members who all have the same vote and the same power in government, but one of them is elected in a different way. One of them is elected at-large instead of from a district. That's what the four-district option is about. The other major difference, of course, is that a five-district option means that there are slightly fewer people in each district, and a little bit broader range of options when it comes to how you define those districts. And that winds up having a pretty significant impact on one of the primary goals of the California Voting Rights Act, which is preventing the dilution of minority votes, of minority block voting. And so that was also a major consideration for our, for our work. So, we have come to a unanimous and very strongly-held recommendation that the city council should go to a five-district option. And the five-district option would mean, number one, that you have the greater flexibility that comes from five districts in defining the lines of the districts and defining communities of interest, and in particular, making sure that we achieve one of the goals of the California Voting Rights Act, which is preventing the dilution of minority votes in the city of Palm Springs. What that would also mean is that there's no at-large mayor, right? The mayor would be selected from among the ranks of city council after each of the members of city council is elected from his or her district through an equal voting process. We have concluded that it would be the wrong decision to go to a four-district model and to have an at-large elected mayor. We heard a lot of input and a lot of arguments with respect to both of these options, and so I want to give you a little bit of a summary of why we came to this conclusion, and, and we're happy, of course, to go into this more deeply, and questions from the council or, or comments from all of you. So first of all, it seemed to us a very important principle of the Palm Springs City Charter, that the five members of city council are co-equal members, that there shouldn't be a definition of a position on city council that has at least an appearance of a different kind of authority or a different kind of power from the other four, when the actuality is that all five members of city council are still going to have one vote and are still going to have the same power on the body of city council. And we encountered, as I mentioned, a lot of lack of understanding among many different members of our community already about the question of what powers the mayor has. And we had a pretty serious concern that going to a four-district model would just encourage confusion, encourage a lack of understanding on the part of members of the community about how the mayor's authority is defined, and therefore how the mayor's political accountability is defined, right? So one of the things, one of the kind of good government principles that we think is important, is that people have a clear understanding of what their elected officials are accountable for and whom they're accountable to, right? And if a mayor has an appearance of authority without the actuality of authority, we had some pretty serious concerns that mayors would be able to claim credit. some pretty serious concerns that mayors would be able to claim credit for good management in the city, which is really the product of either the entire work of the council or the work of the city manager, and might also get blamed for bad management in the city, which once again would not be the mayor's singular responsibility, but it might be easy to tag a mayor with blame for something that's sort of highly visible in the city. And we actually had a particular concern about what that might mean for the accountability of the city manager. So the city manager, who's the person who actually has responsibility for management of the city, he's responsible to the full city council. And when you have five co-equal members of the city council who are all elected in the same way, we think that that accountability to the full city council is clear. If you create a system where you have a mayor who's elected at-large in the whole city, I think it's pretty easy to predict that that mayor is going to claim some kind of greater mandate or some kind of greater political authority because he or she is elected by the entire city and therefore in some way speaks for the city in ways that other members of city council don't. And we think there's a danger that the ability of the city manager to be accountable to the full city council might not work properly if the full city council is not made up of co-equal members, but there's this at least appearance of greater political authority on the part of the mayor. And so a mayor could either shield a city manager from scrutiny if they have a good relationship, or a mayor could go after a city manager if they have a bad relationship in ways that we think would not be consistent with the idea that the city manager is accountable to the entire city council. And so that weighed on our consideration as well. We did, however, consider some arguments against a five district system. One of the arguments that we heard was that going to districts is going to create factionalism, that suddenly, members of council are only going to be accountable to their districts and so all they're going to care about is what's going on in their districts. And therefore, there's going to be sort of polarization within our government. And we heard an argument that having an at-large elected mayor would mean that, one of the phrases that was used is that the mayor would be the adult in the room. The mayor would be the one who would prevent or negotiate around factionalism. And we didn't find that argument very convincing. We, we take seriously the idea that districts might create some kind of factionalism. We think that this is a city that has a level of community and civic engagement, that that's less of a danger than it would be in a lot of cities. But also, we think it's just as likely that a mayor would use his or her position to exploit factionalism as much as to try to avoid factionalism. And we don't see any reason why a four district system would create a greater promise of factionalism not being a problem. We also heard an argument about reducing the number of elected officials that people get to vote for, that it's better to vote from, it's more democratic to vote for more elected officials. And so people can now vote for five members of city council, and that's definitely going way down because we're going to districts or the city is going to districts. But the argument was that two is better than one, that it's better to be able to vote for two elected officials than one. And we didn't find that argument very convincing. In our view, the best way to ensure democratic values is to find a well-designed system of government and then to make sure that all the residents in the community have the opportunity to participate in a full and meaningful and equal fashion in that system of government. And that's where democratic self-governance comes from. And it's already the case that we have districts in the California State Legislature, we have districts in the United States House of Representatives. There are many, many different ways to organize cities. And voting for more rather than fewer elected officials, we think, is not the essence of democracy. We think having a well-functioning government in which all citizens can participate fully and equally is the essence of well-functioning democracy. Finally, we, we heard an argument from many of our meetings with community residents, and we do take this argument very seriously. And the argument was, there's a civic value to participating in a citywide election, that there's something that comes from having one of the elected positions be a citywide elected position that creates a sense of commonality of purpose and so forth. And we think that's a real argument. We think that that's a serious argument. And we think that there is a loss associated with the opportunity to engage in that kind of citywide voting exercise as a kind of collective act of civic engagement. And every way of organizing city government involves trade-offs, and we think that losing that opportunity should be recognized as a trade-off. But we think it is very strongly outweighed by the other good government considerations that I just, I just spent some time discussing. So let me mention, this slide kind of is the converse of the slide that I already, I already talked about. Let me mention a couple of key considerations in relation to the California Voting Rights Act. So, we took a look at the impact that five districts versus four districts would have on specifically the goal of the California Voting Rights Act, which involves preventing the dilution of minority voting. And there were two, or three, pardon me, three major considerations that led us to conclude that a five district system is a much, much more consistent with the goals of the CVRA and a much better option for the city than four districts. The first option just has to do with what the maps look like. Now Alexis mentioned, we, we aren't, of course, yet at the stage of considering particular maps. But in order to educate ourselves about this, we had to start understanding what options are available under these two different approaches. And so largely with the help of Ed Doobie, who was singular and irreplaceable in this, but also with a lot of community input and some help from the demographer, we looked at a bunch of different map options and how the sort of numbers broke down when it came to both populations and also particularly populations of voting age. And Kathy is going to walk us through some of those findings in just a minute, but the short version is, five districts provides a much greater and more meaningful opportunity for achieving the goal of preventing the dilution of minority voting than does four districts. There are real differences in what the city can achieve in seeking to accomplish that goal of the CVRA with five districts instead of four. The second major consideration goes back to what I said about the position of the mayor. If you create a four district system with an at-large mayor, we think that there's every reason to expect that the mayor is going to be this sort of singularly influential political figure, or at least is going to try to become the leading political figure in the city of Palm Springs. And if you have at least the possibility of racially polarized voting in a city, what that means is not only will you lose the opportunity to address that problem with respect to that one position, right? You're going to districts because you want to address the problem, but you're not addressing it with respect to that one position. But it's actually a bigger problem than that because you're creating now a position which in many ways is going to appear to be the most powerful political position in the city. And that's the position that is still going to be characterized by the problem, if indeed there is a problem, of exclusion of racial minorities and their ability to exercise influence in the city. And so we actually, from the perspective of the CVRA, we think that that's a step backwards, not just a missed opportunity, but a real step backwards. And the third issue, very briefly, and we talk about this in the longer report that we submitted, we think, and let me preface this by saying, it's not our job to give the city any legal advice, and the city has certainly not sought any legal advice from us, and we wouldn't have given it to them if they asked for it. But on the face of the California Voting Rights Act, it seems pretty clear to us that a four district system with an at-large mayor is still vulnerable to a lawsuit under the CVRA, that doing that system doesn't give the city any guarantee that going forward, somebody else might not bring a lawsuit under the CVRA and say, "Look, you're still not in compliance." And we have no confidence that a four district system would eliminate future risk under the CVRA, whereas it appears on the face of the statute that a five district system would. And so once again, it's up to the city council and the city attorney to draw legal conclusions, but just from our view of the statute, it seems like that is a danger to the city in a four district model that would not be present in a five district model. And with that, let me turn it over to Kathy to just show you a little bit of the detail that we tried to consider in looking at five versus four options with maps, and then to talk about our next set of recommendations.
Kathy, before you go, and if I can, Mr. Mayor, just make an announcement. We do have copies of the CVRA Working Group's recommendations, which is on the table here in front of you. So if you're like me and it's hard to just follow along, there are also packets. We added those late, so people who come, came early might not have grabbed them when they came in. So if you want to follow along and read that, those recommendations for yourself, you can grab a packet here. Thank you.
So, we wanted to show you what we looked at for this report, and we limited ourselves, although we could have gone broader, to the demographers' maps. They presented eight maps. Four of them were four districts and four of them were five districts. If you look at a district and what we, the two key indices we looked at, and I've, we've aggregated them without, we've aggregated minority voting where we would normally break out Latino, Black, and Asian, and tribal, because they're aggregated for the purposes of simplicity. If you look at the four district maps and the one that, if you take the Mesquite map and you look at total population, you'll find that there's a, and this is the first district, and it's usually northern, that the first, that Mesquite has a minority population of 60%. But when you look at citizen voting age, and that means you drop out non-citizens and younger people, in the four district maps, you come up with a minority percentage of 43 in the strongest district that could possibly have minority, a minority majority. And that's consistent across all of the four district maps. And usually with the remaining districts, the minority citizen voting age drops down into the 20%. So you'll get one district which has about 40% minority. If you go to the five district maps, depending on how the district is drawn, you can look at a total population, and I will take the Agave map. It has a 66% minority population in the first district. If you go down to citizen voting age, you can achieve 49%. Similarly, with Smoke Tree, you'd get 49%. We've seen a couple of maps where you might have gotten in the first, so you maintain a higher percentage of people who, who are minority, who are voting age and citizens. And that means less dilution of the minority vote in at least one district. In the five district maps, it's also possible to get a second district in some instances, and doesn't show in any of these maps, that may be 50% minority, although when you take, when you look at citizen voting age, again, it drops down. So what we found when we looked at these maps, and we could have pulled several others out that were either submitted by citizens or Ed Doobie actually did 10 similar maps, four fives and four fours, to illustrate possibilities across the city. That was very consistent. And it wasn't in every map that's a five that's drawn, but it's in some of the maps that are drawn that you're able to get a higher, a higher percentage of minorities that are of citizens voting age. That's important to take this, that you're taking the steps to not dilute the minority vote. I, I read through the complaint that was filed against us, and they, they not only went back to an allegation, they also went back through the history of the city, saying that we had never, in our, in the history, 80-year history of our city, we never had a Latino mayor, which I think is, as we were talking to some of the Latino elders, we heard that there in fact was a, or not a mayor, but a Latino city councilperson in the 80s. And so we have actually had one in our 80-year history, one Latino who was elected. He owned, I think, an insurance agency in town. The agency's still here. And from our knowledge, we've had one Afro-American person who was elected to council and actually elected as mayor. But as you go back through history, that, that's the history that the plaintiffs used as part of the history to show that we had racially polarized voting. So we didn't actually, we saved our discussion, we looked through a lot of other issues on the four versus five until we got enough maps in where we could take a look at these statistics to make sure that whatever recommendation we made to you was actually consistent with the goal of the CVRA, which is to not dilute minority votes and in fact eliminate the polarization. Okay, so this is easier. What did other cities, what have other cities done? And we looked at a lot of cities, I'm just taking the ones that we had in blocks, and we had a lot of help from the city attorney's office on some of the research we did here. Thank you, Mr. Kopkin. And we looked, to not make the city attorney's office research every city in California, we went with cities between 25,000 and 75,000. There are 146 cities. And what we found was that not too many of the cities, only 42 have gone to districts. Some of them may have been at districts already, and this isn't the result of being sued, but they had started out with districts. And the cities that have gone to districts, about two-thirds of them have gone to a council-elected mayor as opposed to a city, a citywide elected mayor. The same is true, that same kind of percentage, even a little more with the cities that are still at, at large elections, 71% of them have a council-elected mayor. And that, we, pretty much all of the cities were a strong city manager ceremonial mayor system. The cities that aren't tend to be much larger, where they have an elected mayor who is an actually strong mayor, managerial mayor of the type I experienced in the big cities I lived in. When we look at the Coachella Valley, it's interesting because we have two cities, Cathedral City and Indio, that are just going to their first district elections in 2018. Both of them opted to go to a council-elected mayor. Of the cities that have, the six cities that have an at-large mayor, it's pretty split, that have still at-large elections, excuse me, it's split. Three of them have a council-elected mayor and three of them have an at-large elected mayor. The one interesting thing is that Desert Hot Springs, one of our neighboring cities, is that actually has going to a council-elected mayor on their ballot currently. And so we don't, that may change, but they're not changing over to districts. So, the next couple of slides have to do with, once you make the decision as to what form of government you want, what are you going to have to do? And when we put this together, we, we had a, we had an opinion that the city had to go to a even-year election from an odd-year election system, and that had to be agreed to and planned and completed by 2020, November of 2022. So looking at that, what do we advise you to do? And you have a lot of options, and in the packet we had, we listed, we gave you a little sheet with all the options. What we really suggest is, as you're making this transition, you do something that does not add an extra year to any of your terms. We think, we think the voters don't expect that of you, that that would be difficult to do. And to facilitate this, our recommendation was that in the next election in 2019, you go to three-year terms, and then you do that for two election cycles, and at the end of that, you can go back to four-year terms. That's a suggestion. Again, we thought that was the fairest way to the voters. It's fair to the people who are going to be running for those five seats that they know they're running for three-year terms, and it gets the city into this, this even-year election system quickly. The other decisions you'll have to make if you go to a five district system is how do you select your mayor and your mayor pro tem? One of our first recommendations, and this was every city we looked at, no city codified how they were going to select the mayor that did a council-selected mayor. They put it in their rules and procedures. The reason they did that was that if the city, for some reason, needed to do something different, someone wanted to opt out of rotations, for some reason, council wanted to go in a different direction, you had the flexibility or you could waive a rule without having to go through several readings and you could still keep to your schedule of elections. Basically, we recommend a majority vote without putting in Basically, we recommend a majority vote without putting in place a firm rotation system. Some cities have a system based on high vote getter, but I think that would be difficult with a district system where differing numbers of people may vote in district elections, or you'd have an incumbent versus somebody who voted, who had five people running with them. So we, we basically said that that also allowed you flexibility. You might build an informal rotation system into that, but don't do anything, we don't, you'll see how that goes, don't do anything too formal. We'd recommend a one-year term, but for flexibility, the ability to appoint a person to a second consecutive term. You already have a system with the mayor pro tem, where they're appointed, the first meeting in December, in the election year, that makes sense. And then think about whether or not you want somebody to have been on council for a year or two before they can qualify to run for mayor, so that they get a good sense of how the council operates. If you stay with a citywide election for the mayor, 18 cities have gone to an election that's every two years for the mayor, so that when people vote for a, their district rep, they also get to vote for mayor. That's pretty, a pretty nice system for people voting. It has, we didn't make a recommendation on that because it also has the drawback of adding expense for anybody who's running. It's, it'll just cost more to run every two years. The other things, just a very small thing, do you have to live in your district? It's settled policy in California that you need to live in your district when you pull papers, and you need to live in it the entire term. And if you wanted to move out of that district, you would automatically lose your council seat. We didn't recommend that you change that because that's very settled policy in California as to how it's done, so it's just something people need to know, know about if you want to stay in council, don't move. And then, everybody's smiling at one of, one of the consulars. And the last is how you assign districts. And obviously, it's up to the council as to how to assign districts the first, the first two years you go out. And it, it probably can be done pretty fairly, so that you leave space for the people that are still serving, the, the people that will remain, when the first, the first three seats will come up in 2019, there'll be two seats that remain. Those two consulars will remain citywide elected officials until there's a new election, and then those two seats will be assigned. How do you go about doing this? What do your elections look like? We basically recommended plurality voting, which is what we have now, which is the highest vote getter wins. But take a look at and maybe work toward ranked choice voting, which is called, otherwise called, an instant runoff system. The reason to look at the ranked choice voting is that in districts with a per, perla, excuse me, with the winner-take-all system, you can win, you can possibly win with very few votes, especially if they're four or five people running in that district. There may only be 2,000 voters, you can, you can win with very few votes and be on council. Primaries, California's going to a March primary. That means if, if you instituted a primary system, some would, people would have to run in March and then again in November. That's expensive, difficult, drawn out, doesn't make sense. A runoff system has the same problems. You have to wait 80 days, and you have to do it on an election day, so it means that your runoff would be 80 to 110 days after the election. Again, drawn out, difficult, doesn't work for an efficient government. The ranked choice voting really works very well in terms of making sure that the person who gets the highest first and second choice votes wins, but it's difficult to implement. It means you have to educate your voters. A few cities in California do it now, but you, it would involve, and might, it would involve a negotiation with a county. There may be costs, the city might be able to do it on its own, but it's a system, it's a system that, while it works really well, it's something that will take time to implement. And maybe best implemented if several of the charters, and only charter cities can do that kind of an instant runoff. If the charter, if the chart, and all the, most of the valley's cities are charter, so you might be able to work with several of the cities in our valley and institute that in some time period. And they may be interested as more of them go to districts. And I think I'm done.
Cool. All right, I'll try to run through this quickly. Part of our charge from the ad hoc subcommittee was also outside of the districting process. How do we, as a city, think about removing barriers to run and to serve? And how do we be active in trying to increase the diversity inclusion on our boards and commissions, which are often seen as a stepping stone to elected office? So the first category, removing barriers to run and serve, first thing that we looked at was the salary increase. You know, when your salary is not a livable wage, that really affects who is in a position to run, you know? So folks that are independently wealthy have, have more of a leeway, or folks that are retired have more of a leeway to run and take a hit in their income. And so if we want folks that come from a more diverse and broad background, then the first thing we have to consider is a salary increase. There was, there was, I think, a piece in the Desert Sun today about Coachella considering this as well for their city council. So in our report, we offer several recommendations, but that was one of the most significant items that we had talked about. Also, who has information on how to run? If you're often attending city council meetings, or you are part of boards and commissions, you're part of a network of, of city service, and, and you often have access to information or the ear of folks who can provide you quickly information on how to run. But one of, that's also one of the barriers for folks that are coming from communities that maybe don't have that direct access. So providing something like a new candidate forum, especially if we, when we move to districts and the boundaries of the districts, considering having a new candidate forum in each district, right? And so that those candidate forums are really tailored to the needs of the community, and that they're welcoming and also really inclusive spaces to provide this information to folks to consider running for their district. Nomination signatures, so currently, it's 120 signatures that folks need to be nominated. If you're coming from a very tight-knit community and you've demonstrated leadership in that community, yet that community's smaller, then it might be more difficult for you to secure that number of signatures. So we recommended reducing that to 20 signatures. Also, removing barriers to serve. So once you get elected to office, what are the barriers that prevent somebody from running again, or prevent somebody who's tied to that person's network if they represent a minority community, prevents other folks from thinking about running? Well, one is staffing. If, if an individual is a single parent, let's say, and they happen to serve on city council, the amount and workload of the folks that are sitting in front of us right now is tremendous. And so providing additional staffing and support for these folks, so that they don't have to be necessarily at every single event, which is what many folks in Palm Springs expect of all of y'all, can help with that. Also, a car stipend or allowance. So we heard the, the city council members get reimbursed for their mileage, and yet their time is very precious. They're very busy. So how many of them are actually incentivized to fill out the forms of getting reimbursed for their mileage? I work at, they don't, right. I work at a nonprofit, and I'm not nearly as busy as them, and sometimes I don't even take the time to fill out my mileage. So providing a car stipend or allowance will just make that process easier. Also childcare, whether that's an onsite facility or a reimbursement for childcare for, to encourage, and I think brought in this idea of who can serve, right? If there's a person who has young children, and childcare is a huge issue, there was, again, recently, an article in the Desert Sun about the lack of daycare facilities in the Coachella Valley as a whole. And so the city taking an opportunity to lead the way on that. And also, just understanding the cost of running and campaigning, specific to Palm Springs especially, you know, trying to raise six figures to run for a city council position here, can be very daunting, especially to folks that are coming from lower-income communities. Maybe their network is full of lower-income folks. And so hopefully with districts, that will address some of that. And yet, there is also an opportunity to maybe think about creative ways in which, whether that's campaign finance, looking at campaign finance, there's other cities that are doing things, I, I don't recall if we put it in the report, we did. The city of Seattle is doing what's known as democracy vouchers, so every person gets $25 to give to their elected official, and it's all in the spirit of more engagement, more civic and political engagement amongst a variety of communities. And then finally, increasing diversity on boards and commissions. So if we think of these bodies as sort of stepping stones to serving in an elected capacity, we need to be really intentional about the folks that are serving on boards and commissions, to make sure they represent the diversity of the city. And so one of the first steps in doing that is we need to understand how well we're doing that now, or how well we're not doing that now. And that requires us to have some data. And so having an annual survey of demographic markers of what our boards and commissions look like now, you know, Palm Springs has a reputation for being a very LGBTQ-inclusive city, and that's demonstrated by the folks sitting in front of us today. And, and we also know that there are LGBTQ folks of color. And so we've had Ron Oden as mayor, and so are LGBTQ folks of color represented on boards and commissions, are renters represented on boards and commissions, are lower-income folks, are working force folks represented on boards and commissions. And so we've outlined a set of recommendations to address each of these, to make sure that our boards and commissions aren't just full of folks who represent the same communities with the same lived experiences. I think the working group has a, has a deep understanding that the more diverse experiences we have in governing bodies and in spaces that are making recommendations or have the ear of the council, the better and more innovative and exciting solutions we have to issues that are facing our city. And so you can read more about each of these recommendations in the report. And I, I think that's it. Yeah. And I think the rest of the working group additionally has each, each of them have comments they'd like to share, if that's okay.
Very brief.
Very brief.
So, my name is Dixie Miller, and after careful study and research, the five electoral district voting system will work for our community, opposed to four districts. Five districts gives minorities a greater opportunity to become elected for council with less people than a four district. The five districts will encourage more minorities to run for council and have a greater opportunity of being elected. Five districts also clarifies the position and power of the mayor, and making the position of mayor more understandable than it has been in the past. This process is very interesting, considering what happened with Section 14, and how it occurred, and how it ended. So this is opportune time for this to be happening. And it affected a lot of people, even my family, the Section 14. So thank you for listening.
I'm the old-timer of the working group. It's been more than 50 years since my first involvement in the analysis and proposed restructuring of local government. I'm mid-century modern, if you will. The process employed, the process employed by the working group has been thorough and significantly, the outreach to the citizenry, the communities of interest, the education of the communities of interest, and the involvement of and feedback from the communities of interest has been comprehensive. You can, and I hope you will, rely with confidence on these recommendations.
Good evening. Again, this is off top data, and when I was appointed to this group, I had absolutely no clue as to how much time this group would end up spending. Including, including a seven-and-a-half-hour marathon session at the Hilton. Just wanted to also thank Jeff and Lisa for introducing this group in the initial stages, and afterwards, this group under the leadership of Kathy Tobias and Alexis. All I can share with you is that this group was so laser and sharply focused on minorities and diversity, and, and I would like to also acknowledge and thank Anthony, and I can tell you, amazing human being with invaluable information that he provided to this group and cannot be substituted. And I would also like to thank Christie for joining us during that marathon session, and giving us some input that helped us come up to the decisions and some of a basis of recommendations to this group. Thank you.
I'm Ed Dube again, a member of the CVR work group, and I have the proud distinction of coming from the census tract in the city that represents the oldest median age, that is, the oldest community in terms of just sheer time on earth in the city. What I'm going to say next are not my words, I wish I could be so eloquent. They are from Jamil Kuri. He's a playwright and producer, whose works focus on the interplay of cultural identity, citizenship, and class. He has the following to say. As migration patterns continue to increase ethnic, racial, and religious diversity within regions, and demographics continue to change accordingly, we're experiencing growing tensions between that which is pluralistic or polycultural on the one hand, and what is assimilationist or monocultural on the other. It's the mosaic versus the melting pot. It's the transnational versus the particularist. It's the cosmopolitan versus the tribal. It's the inclusive versus the restrictive, and it's the empathic versus the racist. These tensions impact social and public policies and relationships within and between communities. They also affect conversations about representation and storytelling, which stories get told, how, and by whom. This tells us a lot about a geographic area's self-perception, and how images, such as the statue in front of City Hall, and power, such as our council, are distributed in that area. So how is this relevant to us tonight? Well, we, as the working group, we've gone out and listened to all these stories to come up with the conclusions that we've given you. The synergies were unbelievable, trust me. It was just unbelievable, the participation from the community. So what I'm asking So what I'm asking is that you try your best tonight to reach a true consensus on our findings. Moving to five districts here in Palm Springs without a mayor elected at large will not be a zero-sum game, nor is it a disenfranchisement of the majority, because we are a majority of minorities. If anything, adding additional minority voices will continue these synergies and only make us stronger in our progressive global brand. We have a rare window of opportunity to once again show our leadership to the nation. If we can't show the rest of the world how to get this to work and work correctly, who the hell can? That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
And we're happy to take any questions that the council might have for us and provide any other input. Oh yeah, Anthony, did you want to weigh in a little bit? I'm sorry.
Just want to say that it's been really fantastic working with this group of people. They're very diverse. I had no idea that they would all participate in as many community events as we held. When I did some simple math, I came out to the fact that this group has probably put in over 600 hours of work towards this project. I really believe that the report they provided, the model that we've taken, can easily be shared with the League of California Cities, with city clerks throughout California, to show them a model of how to move forward with districting. So I'm really proud to have been part of this. Thank you.
And now we'd love to take any questions you all have and any responses you want from us, from public comment or otherwise. Thank you.
That I was thinking about as we're moving through this one, we should have our city attorney introduce the person to his right. People are probably wondering who the mystery guest is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the working group, city clerk, city manager, and members of the public. This is Jim Priest. His true name's William, but we call him Jim. And he is our planning commissioner, legal counsel. He also happens to be within his very significant law firm in the world of municipal law, one of their leading voting rights experts. So he's been invaluable to me. I think he's had a fair amount of interaction with council members, certainly the subcommittee, and most recently, I think even the working group. So we're very fortunate to have an attorney who not only focuses on municipal law, but is an expert in the world of the Voting Rights Act, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protam?
Mr. Cotkin, is it not true that it's your birthday today?
I don't, I don't think you can prove that.
I have a lot of attorneys in this room. I think I can prove it, in fact. I think that we should sing "Happy Birthday" to Mr. Cotkin. Please join me. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Cotkin.
Happy birthday to you.
And many more.
It's sort of scary when you look over here and realize that four out of seven people on this dais are attorneys. Councilmember Holstich?
I just wanted to talk quickly about process and when we're going to hear from the public, because we have-
As the mayor, I still chair the meetings, if not much else, but I was going to bring that up. That's process. I was going to suggest that we might want to hear from the public before we go into discussion. That way we all heard from both the subcommittee and the public.
I agree, and that's what I was asking. It's an informal meeting, so we don't have a formal agenda. So I think that would be great, and the interest of all these people being here to speak to us, I'm really excited to hear from everyone. So thank you.
Actually, I already thought about that. Thank you. All right, so the next thing we will do is open to public comments, but right now, how many do we? I'm not seeing anybody up here.
Six.
No.
It's under documents.
Yep. Oh, there they are. Okay, we have people lined up to speak. At this time, we will accept public comments, and this time it's been decided for members of the public to address the city council only on this study session item. And your time is limited to two minutes, unless you guys want to make an exception tonight?
City needs a little more time.
Yeah, we'll be liberal. I'll start the timer at two, and then if we need to add another minute or so, I'll-
Yeah.
Since we don't have very many-
We don't have a huge-
We only have like 24 people here, so they could all speak. Okay, our first speaker is Alan, no, you're over there. Alan Carvalho, followed by Peter Maruzzi, then Kevin Francis.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Alan Carvalho. I'm from Cathedral City. My husband is a city councillor in Cathedral City. I have to compliment this group. Wow, we could have used you. We just became a, a city that is doing districting. And I have to say, we also went with five districts. The mayor and the city council were really instrumental in moving this forward. Of course, we were under the lawsuit, but the decision to go to five instead of four, Mayor Henry realized how much, how powerful it was to have an effective city council that worked so well together. It really, everything he does as mayor, he, he likes to deflect and share the responsibility of some of those duties of being mayor. So many times, he doesn't attend all of the events that are required or expected of a mayor, and he does ask the rest of the city council members to attend. So instead of him being bogged down with all these obligations that perhaps your, this, your mayor moon is, that really gave him thought to realize how important it was for people working together as a, as an effective council, really having it five so that there is no elected mayor, but instead chosen amongst those. It's an elected mayor because you're electing a city council member. So it isn't taking the freedom away. I think people get misunderstood. They think, oh, well, you're taking my freedom away. No, you're electing a fifth city council member. And, and since you've decided that those five people are qualified, you're finding qualified people to become mayor as well. So we had to do some convincing in getting people to understand what was required. We, we were thrilled with what we're, now, we're still in the process. Now, we're having our first, this is the first time we're actually having an election. And out of the eight people running, six are Latino. So it has an incredible effect in engaging the public. But thank you for, for doing this. Thank you. What a great job you guys have done, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carvalho. Next speaker is, by the way, you know, we're not going to give unlimited time, but if somebody goes, an extra 30 seconds or so, we'll be a little bit more lenient tonight. Next speaker is Peter Maruzzi, and then followed by Kevin Francis and Alan Worthy.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm here to talk about a recommendation the working group's report that I feel very strongly about, and that is the issue of city council salaries. Since I've been on the planning commission, I have seen firsthand how many meetings our council members attend daily. In addition to preparing for and attending council meetings, there are numerous ad hoc subcommittee meetings that council members attend. There are also various community meetings, constituent meetings, staff meetings, city and valley-wide commission meetings, study sessions, and interviews of candidates for the city's many boards and commissions, among other things. Removing barriers from serving on the city council is a key goal of the current process. Addressing the issue of inadequate council salaries will allow for greater participation from diverse communities such as minorities, low and middle-income residents, parents with young children, people with disabilities, young people, and others. Palm Springs is no longer the sleepy Hollywood hideaway of the 1940s. City council members now serve full-time roles, devoting time during the standard workday and evenings to fill their duties to the community. This makes holding an additional full-time or part-time job very difficult. However, the annual salary of a council member is $29,196. Once rent or a mortgage, utilities, food, gas, and other basic expenses are calculated, there is virtually nothing left for a single person, much less a family. This largely limits the pool of candidates to those that are independently wealthy or retired. In order to encourage more resident participation in elections and a broader array of candidates, the working group recommends increasing the salary of the city council from a stipend to a subsistence level. Some options for consideration include half the salary of a member of the California State Legislature, which would be $52,500, or the median household income for Palm Springs, which would be $46,760, or the current minimum salary for exempt workers in California, which is $45,760. All salaries should be indexed for inflation with an additional amount for the mayor, such as the $12,304 the mayor currently serves for ceremonial duties. Some will complain that this proposal is a budget buster, but the total cost for increasing council salaries would be approximately $85,000 a year. I strongly believe that this is a reasonable amount, amount of money to spend to ensure that people of all backgrounds and circumstances are financially able to serve on the city council. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Maruzzi. Next speaker is Kevin Francis, followed by Alan Worthy, then Carl Baker.
My name is Kevin Francis, born and raised in Palm Springs, California, on the north side. I have the pleasure of working at Cheeky's in Palm Springs, an amazing restaurant. I had the opportunity to speak to a few city council members in regards to the districts. I'm not very knowledgeable when it comes to as much as you guys were talking about today, but I did my best. First off, let me honor each and every one of you for everything that you guys have done. I think it is a amazing thing, not only as a black man, but giving the North End an opportunity to speak out. My grandmother has lived there for many years. I remember the times where she didn't, there wasn't any roads. So we have, we are, we are Palm Springs, and I think breaking those out is going to be a great opportunity, and I want to be able to sit where you are one day. So how do we do that? Well, that's by me standing up here and speaking and telling you what I have to say. Thank you, Christie Holstich, for your time and for what you're doing, and I honor you, and I also honor each and every one of you guys. Thank you so much.
Okay, our next speaker is Alan Worthy, followed by Carl Baker, then Miguel Navarro.
Good evening. Thank you, and thank you for all your hard work. Well, I'm all for it, because if we have a council member representing each district, then the neighborhood associations are going to hold that council member's feet to the fire with regard to the one thing that we never hear up there: crime. Look, just take my word for it. I do not solicit anyone. I am still in litigation with Eisenhower. I do not and cannot bring it up, okay? I have settled with one person, okay? And I'm on a gag order there. I am telling you, everywhere I go in the last two weeks, there's been six people pops up here and there and here, and I'm at the Ralph's down, right down the street here, and this woman jumped in front of me and grabbed the paper. What was the article about? The police transparency, you know, law coming up on the ballot. She grabbed the paper. I said, "Oh, you two?" She said, "We are fed up." I said, "Crime? Yeah." I said, "Where do you live?" She said, "Right over there." You guys have got to become more conscientious of it. It is embarrassing. It is a disclosure. That's the biggest thing that has been lost on all of you, and I have not had the chance to talk to you about it. It's a disclosure, okay? And I spoke to Ms. Holstich and Mr. Corz before the meeting, and I guess you haven't heard, the shootout two nights ago. And my friend called him, I said, "You live?" He said, "Yep, we thought we heard." Six or seven shots of the guy from Cathedral City running, you know, across the Stichino, bang, 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 shot and killed, crashes the car. Then of course, and I'll just end on this horrible note, and our illustrious newspaper bothered to cover it, Joy Pond fleeced by the caregiver, the so-called, whatever they call themselves, to the tune of what? Let's see here. Four point, what was it, three, three million, four, oh, $3 million fraud of widow. Well, like I said, they got me and my family, too, three million, I'm not really sure. I mean, just lately, for the second or third time, I see it coming across the ticker tape, across the ticker tape, ad auction, a rare nickel sold for $2.65 million?
Mr. Worthy, your 30 minute, your 30 seconds over.
One nickel. There's a bag full of coins they got.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Next speaker is Carl Baker, followed by Miguel Navarro, then Les Young, and then Bill Clements.
Good evening, Mayor Moon and city council members. My name is Carl Baker. I'm an attorney at Desert AIDS Project, and also I would like to thank the subcommittee, the working group, for their hard work. I helped on some of the ethics committees, so I know the time and dedication it took to put into this, and thank you for that. I echo the resolve, the resolution that they proposed of five districts. Not only does it increase minority population, it decreases the cost of running for council, which gives more people an opportunity to share their voice and to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Miguel Navarro, then Les Young, then Bill Clements, and Jim Stewart.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city staff, city manager, lovely audience. My name is Miguel Navarro, and I'm a resident of Palm Springs, and I'm here to comment and support fully of the California Voting Rights Act Community Working Group recommendation of having five districts with a rotating mayor instead of just four districts with an at-large mayor election. For me, it's clear, this is the best direction for our city, and it closer aligns to the goals of the CVRA. This will increase the cohesiveness and the unity of all five council members as a whole. I believe this will create improved synergy within our council and is a community's best interest if we truly want to enhance representation. Passing the gavel amongst everyone on the council creates inclusiveness. It's fair, it's simple, and it's equal. We'll see a variety of leadership, different backgrounds, and strengthen the level of cooperation within council. Within the five districts, I'm very optimistic that we'll see a more civically engaged community, whether it's by voting, running for office, or simply by having confidence to approach their representative within that district. The rotating of leadership positions is not a novel idea. It's actually a common practice in businesses and in many trade organizations. Already, many local governments like San Diego County have an unofficial policy of rotation that has been quite successful, and I think it could be very successful here, too. We are fortunate to have a place with an exceptional city manager and a functional city staff that will continue to carry on the day-to-day operations that our city needs. So our city will not suffer, our city will not lose out. Council will be best represented with five members that carry the same title, equal pay, equal responsibilities. Finally, I know it's not a recommendation, but the finding of the CVRA to have that salary seems very appealing, and I think it will definitely make it much easier for people who currently can't afford to be able to run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. Next is Les Young, followed by Bill Clements, and then Jim Stewart.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam Roberts, council and CVRA. I'd like to start by thanking the CVRA members and Anthony for coming to Four Seasons on a hot Saturday afternoon, when I know you wanted to be someplace else, but instead, you spent time with us, sharing the maps, sharing the reason for the map, and the need for the change. It was very well received, and our community thanks you very much for spending the time with us. I support the recommendation of five districts with respect to, I'm sorry, in an effort to reach a stronger minority majority, five districts seems to be the, the best current choice. In fact, going forward, I would challenge the next council to seek the vote of the public to move to seven district city council in an effort to distribute the workload of sub, ad hoc, valley-wide committees, commission liaisons, and other commitments of the elected. Possibly then, some of the committees could meet more frequently and not place undue burden on the elected. Today, I am at many meetings that most of, of the council members are at, and it's just really troubling to think, these people didn't necessarily seek out a full-time job, and yet they're everywhere. So I thank you very much for what you're doing. I hope that we can grow this to a slightly larger group in, in further elections. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Next speaker is Bill Clements, then followed by Jim Stewart and Michelle Castillo.
Good evening. My name is Bill Clements. I have lived for 21 years on the freeway known as Racket Club. I have lived for twenty-one years on the freeway known as Racket Club, and I have several items I'd like to point out to you or give my input into. Number one, I don't know if you're planning on a general referendum on this issue with the citizenry, but I think the people, if you're going to change the system of representation, you really need to have the citizens decide if that's what they want, regardless of potential lawsuits. The second is the idea of rotating the city mayor. I think that's an excellent idea. My recommendation that it would be rotated. Everybody takes a turn, everybody's in order, you don't have to have any conflict about voting who's up and who's not. The assistant mayor or mayor pro tem is the next in line, and you just keep going through each member. Very simple. The major issue for me is the idea that people can only vote for those people in their district. That really cuts down the, I think, the interest, but also the breadth of the public input. I would recommend that the members here, members here, look at having a primary election in each district, and then the two top voters to go to the general election. They would still be from the district, but everybody in the city would have an input in who they wanted. That I think is fair. It makes sure that the council members know that they have to pay attention to each and every citizen, not just those in their district. And it makes sure that the members of the city can go, citizens, can go to any council members and not be referred. There was a comment about districts in Congress and Senate. Congressman, if they get, this is the way it used to be, anyway. Congressman, if they get a question or input from someone not from their district, will hand it off to the person in that district. If they get information, like a senator from a different state, they'll send it on to that senator from that state. Keep everybody responsible on the board, keep all the citizens involved in voting for each person. That would be my strongest recommendation. And the last thing is salary. We would have to change from stipend then to salary, but I don't think that's a bad idea. I would encourage even perhaps before we get there, that the city council members, and mayor, of course, have administrative assistance.
Mr. Clements, you need to wrap it up. You're more than thirty seconds over, so thank you.
So, the administrative assistance can take a lot of the secretary, a lot of the other material off of the council members.
Thank you.
I thank the city for having this, and I thank you, members, for providing.
Next speaker is Mr. Jim Stewart, followed by Michelle Castillo, then Edwin Remoron.
Good evening, members of council and the committee. And, you know, I'm a forty-three-year resident of the city of Palm Springs. There's seven seats up there. There used to be seven council members. We used to have a rotating mayor with seven members of council, and I wonder if your committee looked into the seven members. It would actually create, we had drawn districts back in nineteen seventy-four, which really, really brought in all minorities, when the city was, had them all over the place. And for your information, Section fourteen was not a product of moving people out by council. It was one minority community that put the other minority community out of their home, out of their, off their land. We've had minorities, ever since I've been here, we've had different minorities, whether you want to call them by race, by religion, or by sexual orientation, but they've been on this council ever since, actually, the seventies. There's been one person here, whether it be a woman, we've had a tribal member, we've had, you know, various people. And my only suggestion here is, I don't have, I'm the writer, I'm one of the leaders of the group that brought the directly elected mayors here. I was the chairman of Citizens United, and my suggestion was, I don't have a problem with the districts. I think districts work better, but you might look at seven, number one. Number two, it will bring you more minority in the district itself. And number two, maybe we should, at least because we had seventy-four percent of the electorate of this city passed the mayor-at-large, maybe we ought to give the three, well, the mayor and the, and two council members another year on their seat, and take the two thousand nineteen election, basically, to say to the people, "Do you want to get rid of the mayor-at-large, or do you not?" And make that the two thousand nineteen election, and then ask the questions whether we want to have five members or seven members. I suggest, like the last gentleman, I've been on every board and commission in this city except the planning commission, and that was because of my business, but I think the councils work and the, and the commissions, everybody works so hard in this town to make it what it is, and it, I got news for you. I do real estate all over the southern, southwestern area for major, major players. Palm Springs is on everybody's list. It's unfortunate we lost the Apple Store. We couldn't move quick enough downtown, but...
Mr. Stewart, you're more than thirty seconds.
So, I, that would be my suggestion, is maybe look at a seven-member council with a rotating mayor, and go to the nineteen election and ask the people if they wish to get rid of or keep a mayor and then the number. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Our next speaker is Michelle Castillo, followed by Edwin Remoron, and then Naomi Soto.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Castillo. I stand here tonight as a local community leader, activist, and one of the co-organizers for Bayanihan Community Outreach. I'd like to share a little bit of what it means to, to have those kind of events when it comes to making these important decisions in our city, and to make sure that everyone is included, not just some groups, not just some groups, but all of them. The word Bayanihan means to me, a community coming together, acceptance, warmth, and empowerment. And when I think of a community coming together, I think of inclusivity and a growing awareness to uplift marginalized voices in all communities. To me, Bayanihan, the word and the spirit is a place where we can all feel accepted. I grew up here in Palm Springs, and to my blessing and fortune, I was born in the dynamic neighborhood of Veterans Tract comprised of Filipino and Latino families. It was there where I learned the first definition of what community means through the woman in my family that raised me, and the food and the love that I found in my Lola's cocina, which means grandmother's kitchen. We will be moving forward as Bayanihan collective, and one of our goals is to bridge the historically deep gaps of cultivating these healthier and sustainable relationships. When I think of outreach, events should not happen as a one-off experience, but an ongoing understanding of how we can help each other and how we can push forward together. And these gaps are deep, as we've heard about Section fourteen. I, I think about transparency, communication, accessibility to, to all cultures. So, with that said, I'm not saying a recommendation or suggestion, but I'm calling for action for our local government and the residents of Palm Springs, and everyone here, to take a hard look at where we can fill those gaps, and where we can start to really build a place that we like to call "like no place else." And I really hope we can come together and start to continue building those bridges of accessibility, communication, and transparency to all the communities of color who are going to be impacted by the districting process, and not just that, but all the ongoing social and political issues that we have here. So, again, I want to say thank you for your time, and yes, I really hope we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Our next speaker is Edwin Remoron, and then Naomi Soto, then Juanita Garner.
Good evening, Mayor Moon, our distinguished city council members and representatives and staff in the California Voting Rights Act Community Working Group. Right on. My name is Edwin Remoron, a Filipino-American resident and registered voter living in Palm Springs, and I fully support the more inclusive five district recommendation of the working group, and I urge the city of Palm Springs to seriously spend time and resources to live up to its tagline of Palm Springs being an inclusive world-class city, dedicated to providing excellent and responsive public services to enhance the quality of life for current and future generations. You need to support more efforts to reach marginalized communities in a city founded on de facto and de jure segregation, as we've been talking about more about Section fourteen as well. I was born in nineteen seventy-one at Desert Hospital. Yes, I said Desert Hospital. Attended Sierra Vista Elementary, was bused to Nellie and Kaufman Middle School in Cathedral City, and graduated from Palm Springs High School in nineteen eighty-nine. That was the educational journey so many of my dear friends from the Veterans Tract or Desert Tract neighborhood, Demuth Park, and Palm Springs U Center, kept us busy and fit. We, we were all experienced, we all experienced the daily and historic separations, especially along race and class and neighborhoods. After attending college at the University of California Riverside, I pursued a curatorial career for twenty years in New York City. Fast forward, I returned to Palm Springs four years ago, and now I'm my mother and father's caregiver at home, and it is a love and supportive family, and also church family, that have been so supportive as my parents age. Bayanihan is found, found in the tight spirit, in this tight spirit, that amazing feeling of knowing your mother was in good hands during her temporary nursing home stay months ago, because her best friend, Nana Josephine Madrid's daughter, Esther Juan, yes, that's Judas Yohan's mother, who coordinate, who co-organized our Bayanihan event, was there as a lead nurse. I grew up with the Madrid family. Bayanihan is returning the sustainable support and love, for, for instance, in buying groceries at AJ Market, which has been owned and run by Manang Esther's husband, Manang Aurelio, and yes, staffed by their daughters. Bayanihan is in, is in the countless times our households, our households exchange homegrown fruits and vegetables. Working with Judas Yohan, Generaliza Remoron, yeah, she's my niece, and Michelle Castillo, I'm almost done, the community outreach event at the Demuth Park Community Center has been inspiring on so many levels and was designed to bridge the Filipino communities to City Hall. We were overwhelmed by the attendance and response. At least sixty people attended. It was attended mainly by Filipinos, but included a diverse audience from throughout the city. It was firstly encouraging when Alexis Ortega...
Mr. Remoron, you're way over your thirty, thirty seconds.
Asked to meet, I'm almost done, to meet with us and invited us to attend meetings with the working group. And we're especially thankful to Anthony Mejia, who's been meeting with us as well. So, we, we look forward to, I'm going to fast forward, because you're going to get my full comments, and you can all read it later, okay? If not, we'll put it on YouTube, okay? On October twenty-seventh, we invite you all, and we hope to see the city council members there. We definitely want to acknowledge the fact that Councilmember Holstich and Middleton were there at our event, and we welcome you October twenty-seventh, Demuth Park. All right? Come on in.
Thank you, Mr. Remoron. Next speaker is Naomi Soto, and our last speaker, who's requested to speak, is Juanita Garner. If anyone else wishes to speak, please put a card into the city clerk at this time.
Good evening, Mayor Moon, city council, members of the working group. My name is Naomi Soto. I'm a resident here in Palm Springs, and I'm an anomaly. I am Latina, I am millennial, but I'm not from the desert originally, but I've decided to build my career here and also build my life here. My congratulations and sincere appreciations to the working group. The findings are extremely thorough and really provide a guidepost or a guidebook for the city to really have a legislative body that represents the population. So, thank you. I'm fully supportive of a five council, five-member council. This will help us achieve the kind of the goals that you've outlined. I did kind of have a question or inquiry for the working group and also for the city council to consider around if you found any cities where there were certain parameters or conditions that made it more feasible to move for, to a ranking choice voting system. You know, I recognize we're, we're shooting for some big goals here, and, you know, I think they're all admirable. I would just kind of be in, I would really encourage a conversation around making ranking choice voting of larger priority, and really ensuring that every single district in Palm Springs is really representing the majority of their residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Soto, next speaker is Juanita Garner, oh, Juanita Garner, then Dieter Crawford.
I'm a fifty-two-year resident of the Coachella Valley and a twenty-two-year resident of Palm Springs. I have attended several of the community outreach meetings on redistricting, and I've had the opportunity to speak with many Palm Springs residents. Most every single person I've spoken to has been extremely enthusiastic about having a five district, five districts. They've been very excited about being represented and being, their communities in particular being representative, represented. I'm very excited about the five districts as well, and I look forward to doing whatever I can, doing my part to help in any way possible to make it successful. I am a person of color. I'm Mexican. I, I have always tried very hard to be a leader if I can, in, in whatever small way I can do that. I bring this up only because, to me, when I'm able to see someone that looks like me in a leadership position, it encourages me to be involved. I know that in my school at Catherine Finchew where I work, when I decided to take a leadership role, it immediately brought the Latino community to become more involved. That's all it took. It seems simple, but it's important. It's really important that up there I can see a face that looks like mine. Please, work really hard, do your very best, and we, as citizens, myself and, and the Latino community that I represent, we are here to support you, and we really want this five district system to be a huge success. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garner. Next speaker is, our last speaker will be Dieter Crawford, unless someone else pushes the card in. Evening, Mr. Crawford.
Good evening, everyone. I was born and raised in the Desert Highland Gateway Estates neighborhood. My family's lived there for over sixty years. My background is in community health and public health. I volunteer up in the Desert Highland Gateway Estates neighborhood. I'm a community health worker. I'm a graduate of Loma Linda University, San Manuel Gateway College, and I just want to thank the city and the CRV, CVRA working group for all the work that they put in and researching the historical info about the communities of color, and just doing outreach as well to the Hispanic community and the Filipino community as well. And I support the five district map with the rotating mayor. I think that would give minorities the best chance at being elected to office, and, like I said, I support a minority district with Black, Hispanics, and the Filipinos. I think that we have common interests as far as children in school, education levels, income levels, and geographic isolation. That's one of the big things that I want to touch on. It's been said up here earlier about being marginalized and pushed to the edges of town, and I, I just think those areas are underserved and underrepresented, so I'd like to see someone represent them. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. We have another speaker, Jeff Jones. Mr. Jones will be our last speaker, unless someone else puts a card in.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, city council. Thank you to this work group right here. I, too, am in support of the five districts, remapping of the city and the rotating mayor. I think we have a unique opportunity in Palm Springs to really sort of build a city that's going to, to engage everybody, so we'll see a different face across the city council with different backgrounds and ethnicities, which I think is very important to our city, to our future growth, and so that we can include everybody. So, everybody, no matter where you are in the city, we'll see somebody on city council that might look like you, that would sort of further encourage their development in city and civic engagement. So, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone else wish to speak? City clerk? That's it? Seeing none, we will close the public comments. Now, so now, city council, do you have questions of, of the working group or discussion items? Mayor Protem?
I don't really have a question, and that's unusual.
Unprecedented, I think, is the word.
I knew the mayor would have a thought on that as well, and that's because I've never seen such a comprehensive report on a specific... And that's because I've never seen such a comprehensive report on a specific and complicated issue as you have brought forward to us. And I, I can't tell you how grateful I am. This is a tough issue, and you guys have made it palatable. You've been inclusive enough to make those who normally might be intimidated by this process, or those in the community that haven't had participation in the past, come forward and speak to us. And that's something we're always trying to do, and I think you actually did it better than we do it. And I want to acknowledge that. I've worked with some of you on a regular basis. Kathy and I have known each other for years and worked together and off top, and, and Ed, I know, and you guys just did an amazing job, and I, and I want to thank you. I, I know we're really going to discuss this and come to votes next week, but as I walk through your report, I don't have my usual 30 stickies and questions. You pretty much got to those answers. Thank you.
Asam Kors.
May I say something very quickly in response to—
Certainly.
—Mayor Protem Roberts? Can I just echo the praise that Mayor Protem Roberts just offered, but offer it to the members of the community that just showed up and, and contributed to our conversation today? And let me say this in very personal terms. Today was a rotten day. Today was a day where the United States was subjected to a rehearsal of a discussion about sexual assault that I found a brutal experience, and I think a lot of my fellow Americans found a brutal experience. And I needed to be reminded of what community engagement looks like, and of what good government looks like, and of what functioning government looks like. And you all, in the extraordinary depth and care and, and, and life experience that you drew upon in educating us throughout this process, but also today, about the work that we did, but the work that the city council has in front of it, you gave me what I needed today to remember what is great about our community and what is great about the United States, or at least can be. And, and I say that with all sincerity. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else, Councilman Kors?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. First, just echo the thanks to the working group. The number of hours is extraordinary, and it's really nice to get a report that deals with a lot of legal issues that I think, now I'm a lawyer, granted, but I think was very understandable from people I spoke to. You really tried to put it in a way that I think made it simple for folks, as much as you can with so many issues, and you took on so many issues. And I echo your comments about the community, both here, but at the meetings we went to. And several of the council members went to most of the meetings, as well as the subcommittee. And the turnout that we were getting when we talked to other cities, we had so much more turnout, so much more engagement, and when we get to maps, so many more maps, because of the outreach. And so I think it's really important to highlight that. One thing I want to just point out while everyone's here is that we extended our boards and commissions terms. So instead of putting new people in on July 1st, that's going to be January 1st. So during this process, we were able to talk at the various meetings about how to apply for boards and commissions. And I know we, many of us have said, if anyone wants to reach out to us, our emails are on the website. To talk about the boards and commissions, please do, because one of the goals of this opp, taking this opportunity to encourage people to learn about the boards and commissions and apply, I think is one we take very seriously. Couple of questions, just while we have everyone here, and because I agree, I think next week, on October 4th, is when we're going to make decisions and really deliberate. But one of us, I want to ask the working group and the others, or probably the lawyers, you know, you talked about, instead of rotating, having, assuming we go to five districts, the mayor elected from within the council, and one of the reasons was, then you have someone who the majority supports in that role. And I do have some concerns on that, and I, I get the benefit of both. And I definitely think if someone doesn't want to serve, they shouldn't, because if someone doesn't want to do the extra ceremonial duties, they shouldn't have to. But one of my concerns is that that could have the impact of disenfranchising the minority members of council, or causing, we'll, we'll always stick together, and we'll, you know, three people will just rotate through. So I just have, did you talk about that, and what were your thoughts?
What, what we, we did talk about it. The, I think the reason we said is, don't formalize it. You could develop a rotation system, but allow yourself to have some exceptions in it. So someone may not want to serve, someone may be ill, someone may want to serve at a different period in time. And a lot of the markers that communities use didn't necessarily work like highest vote getter. The other thing is that if you, you might have a rotation system where there's someone that no one gets along with and you don't have confidence in them, and I hate to say, say that, but there may be, I came from Santa Monica, so we actually had a couple of people that didn't get, didn't get elected in the rotation because they didn't get along with anybody else on council. So I, I, it just gives you a little bit of flexibility. If you do it, you set up a rotation system, just keep it in your rules or keep it flexible.
Okay.
And that's really the, what, what I learned from the other cities, is they left some flexibility in their system, not to bypass people, but to deal with exceptional circumstances.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
And one other thing that we heard from community members, that if you want to consider a rotation-based system, I suggest you give some attention to, is that you don't want the idea of a rotating mayor to serve as a barrier to service for people who would be interested in being on council but wouldn't want to fulfill the duties of the mayor. And, and so obviously, you can structure it in a way that people can opt out, but there's probably going to be a need to have a really sort of clear and sustained civic education around that, if that's the direction you all decide to go in, so that you don't wind up having people who would otherwise be great city council candidates who just opt out because they think that part of the deal is that they have to perform the, the mayor function as well.
Great. That all makes a lot of sense. Thank you. Two questions, just, and they're, I think, brief, for our legal council. One is, which I didn't know about until today, when I read an article on it, was, well, actually, no, that's another one, so we'll do three quick legal things. One is that there's a bill that passed the legislature, that is at the governor's desk, that would allow legislators not to live in the district they're representing, as at least as I, I didn't read the bill, I read the article. Is that limited, if that gets signed, is that limited to just the legislature, or would that apply to local governments?
I'm sorry, Jeff, I, could you explain that a little bit more? Because I didn't see it, so I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, so the legislature passed, currently in California, the policy, I think Kathy explained it, is you have to live in the district you represent. The legislature passed a bill saying at least they don't have to do that. It hasn't been signed or vetoed yet, but I didn't know if the bill was broader than that, and how that might, I mean, we, we should know by next week, given the timing of bills, but—
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, honorable staff and working group. My understanding of what I know of that bill is that that is limited to state legislators. I don't believe it applies to local, but I would have to go back and double-check that one and make sure.
If it gets signed, it might be worth figuring, yeah, figuring that out. They sometimes do exempt themselves from other laws.
As you said, this discussion, this dialogue will continue in a week's time. We'll certainly have a response for you based on a comprehensive review of that bill.
Councilman Middleton?
Go ahead, please, on that one. Yeah, on that one. I have seen the bill, it was a very quick read on it, but it's my understanding that it wasn't intended to say you no longer had to live in the district, but to address situations that sometimes happens among legislators, where they have more than one home, and because a spouse may be working in and around Sacramento, they have both a home in their original, in their district, they have a home in the Sacramento area, and that marker of having a second home and a spouse or family that is, seems to be more rooted in that other community should not be used as evidence to say that they do not in fact live within their district, which is about as complicated as it can get.
Okay. The other thing, just to mention and make sure we understand it, because we just got this information today, but the issue of whether charter cities need to move to even year elections is something that has never been litigated, other than it's being litigated now in Redondo Beach, and the trial court ruled that charter cities don't, that you have control over your municipal affairs. But it's really early in the process. The attorney general issued an opinion that's not binding on any court, that it is required for charter cities. So this is still an unknown? Is that the best way to say it?
Yes. This one I can speak to a lot more in detail, Mr. Kors. Yes. SB 415 is the statute that was passed several years ago that, under certain circumstances, would have cities move the date of their municipal elections. The attorney general gave an opinion last year indicating that charter cities are subject to that, even though the statute itself is a little ambiguous in the language. We were sort of proceeding on that understanding. However, the city of Redondo Beach filed an action earlier this year to challenge that, and got a trial court ruling just yesterday. We're still trying to get a copy of the order, it's at recent, but the trial judge said, no, SB 415 does not apply to charter cities. I would be shocked if it weren't appealed, so I'm sure it's going to go up in that process, and we'll see what happens with the Court of Appeal.
Okay. And just maybe for Mr. Kotkin, the even odd year is not something we have to decide next week, or is it?
No, it's not necessary for you to make that decision next week. At this point in time, given the council and the subcommittee's direction, you're trying to decide whether to go four or five districts with a very serious eye toward defining and facilitating, making easier, the meetings where you'll be looking at multiple maps. If you're looking at four versus five districts, that's going to eliminate certain maps and perhaps facilitate a better discussion.
Thank you. My last question is, and I read the working group's view that five districts is more consistent with the CVRA and the memo from city attorneys, and there was something in it that confused me, and I'm glad Mr. Priest, I think, was the primary drafter, so maybe you could explain it to me. So Government Code Section 34886, which you refer to in the memo, I won't read the whole thing, but basically it says, "A city can move to five districts or four with an at-large mayor without going to the voters, but has to do a declaration that it's in the furtherance of the California Voting Rights Act."
Correct.
Okay. Does that then shield the city from litigation if we do four districts and an at-large mayor, since it seems to be giving that option in that code section?
Yes, Mr. Kors. The, the default position under the law is, if you amend your charter, it's got to go to an election. Government Code 34886 is a special rule the legislature passed so that the council could make that change without having to go to an election. It could be done by an ordinance of the council here. You do have to make the finding that it's in furtherance of the CVRA's goals. Our position is that while a four-plus-one structure is viable under the CVRA, it's a legally viable option, the five district solution is more consistent with the CVRA because it leaves no at-large elements.
Okay. So if, so if we, let's say we do four, despite that, we do four and an at-large mayor. Does this Government Code section give us any shield if someone sues us that the at-large is causing racially polarized voting and is in violation, or not?
34886 would not give you the legal shield necessarily. We've looked into this quite a bit of detail. A four-plus-one structure would not, it would not absolutely insulate the city the way a five district structure would, because again, there would still be an at-large element. What we can say is that there are a number of cities in California, including ones that received demand letters from the same attorney that sent the demand letter to Palm Springs, that he's agreeable to four-plus-one structures. Now, that's him. That's no promise that, you know, another attorney or another group could not come along and, and raise those issues because they're still at least an at-large element. We also think from a substantive standpoint, you know, if you went to a four-plus-one, that still puts you in a better legal position than if you just stayed at-large across the board.
Okay. Thank you. That was helpful.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Our audience members brought up two compelling questions for me. The issue of a seven-member council. I'd like to, I'm sure you discussed that, and I'd love to know where you went with that.
You have to make a decision by December 30th, or you have to put, put your sys, your new government in place by December 30th. You have a charter with the advice of the city council that allows you to have five city consulars. So you couldn't get to December 30th and also have, you'd have to do a charter change. So you have to, even if your decision was you wanted to go to seven, you would have to go to four-plus-one or five by the end of December, and then make that decision later.
Thank you, Kathy. I understand the charter issue. I, I was more asking in general. Obviously, that's something that would have to come back through another council. I wonder if you at least had the discussion of the benefits or lack of benefits.
We looked at it, and what the concern I think we had with it was that the, if you have about 10,000 voters in an election, you're getting into very small numbers of voters in your districts if you go to seven. So it was, it was more that how hard would, we didn't go very deeply into that because we didn't think that decision had to be made, but we were also concerned about how small the districts would be, and what may, possibly that it would end up being difficult to administer.
Did it offer any greater opportunity to encapsulate, or—
The, the answer is yes, you might, I think you might be able to get a second major, it's possible that it would, it would facilitate a second district that could have a majority-minority voting age. Since we had no seven-district maps, that's not really something we could look at. We were only really able to look at the four versus five.
With that said, we also had some additional conversation that was brought up today, which is this idea of spreading around the workload, you know, with, with the reality of ad hoc subcommittees, of attending different commission meetings, all of that. We did have a very brief discussion on if seven districts would, you know, spread that workload around more. And at the very beginning, we did have conversations about would seven districts provide more opportunities for minority communities. One of the difficulties with the data and the numbers that we're facing is, you know, there's a really good chance of getting one, and also one isn't enough. One, one can feel like tokenizing, one can feel like, like the issues that are affecting these communities are not elevated where they need to be. And so seven districts could potentially help offset that and provide richer discussions. But it was my understanding, and I think it was the working group's understanding, that all of this was more in line with the city charter with five, and so we limited our discussions to five.
Okay. So maybe we can discuss that more. Thank you for your responses. My second question has to do with the issue of a, I don't want to say a rotating mayor, but a council elected a mayor, because that seems more of what we're looking at, to me. I think the word rotating is a little bit confusing. Again, we had an interesting question on whether we might want to consider saving that issue and to get a real vote of the community. And my sense from your report is you got a pretty good survey of the community on this, and I wondered if you could elaborate on that, or if you saw any benefit in going to the electorate on that issue.
Is your microphone—
I'm sorry. We heard 15 comments tonight. All 15 of them were in favor of the five districts and a council-elected mayor. I think it's pretty clear that it's much, much, it meets the CVRA much better, and it's a more favorable approach for the long range.
So the question of— So the question of, if we start from the assumption that the council will choose to adopt five districts with a council-selected mayor, I understood you to be, well, are you asking about the method of selection or are you asking about five versus four as what you want to go to?
I'm sorry, no, I was just defining the method of selection at the council level. I was more wanting to get a sense, a clear sense from you and calling it a survey just because you were out meeting with so many people in the community and concerned, concerned people who vote and care on their take on this. So my, what I got from this particular question from the audience was have we fully vetted that issue with the community itself, given that he, and I don't know if this is true, we'd have to look into it, that he referenced, I guess, a vote in '74 or maybe it was '71, was 74%. I forget what the statistics were, but I just wondered what your take was from the community.
Can I just answer first? So let me just say two things quickly. First, I don't think that we can responsibly say that we have a representative sampling of community input on this question. We worked very, very hard to get the broadest input that we could. We got an extraordinary amount of input. As a scholar, I'm not prepared to say it is a sort of scientifically representative sample. With that caveat, the overwhelming input that we got was that there was a preference for a five-district council-selected mayor system. So you all can decide how much that weighs into your deliberations. We got a lot of input. I'm not prepared to say it was, it was fully representative.
Okay.
We did get some input and we did specifically interview some people who were in favor of a elected mayor. We wanted to make sure that we really heard the arguments of people who'd been speaking in favor of that and it wasn't that every person we talked to was in favor of five.
I think that you make a very strong argument for a council-elected mayor or five districts. I just, I want to make sure we've heard clearly from the community. You know, we have 24 people in the audience tonight and I know you've met with hundreds more, but I'd like to get as much as we can, I'd like to get a clear sense from the community. That's all I have, Mayor.
The one thing I'll mention that you all, if you do take that idea seriously of at least considering having this be a referendum issue, is that there is a feedback loop effect that you might want to worry about, that if the issue of five versus four has implications for the dilution of minority block voting, then a citywide referendum would partake of that problem potentially and you might be having the